Thank you all present. For this time, I'll call on the city attorney to go over the closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor. You have four primary items on your closed session this evening. The first is a conference with legal counsel with regard to one item of litigation. That item is specified in the agenda. Your second item is a conference with legal counsel with regard to two items of anticipated litigations. Those items are listed in the agenda. Item three is a conference with your labor negotiators with regard to the bargaining groups listed in the agenda. And finally, your final item is a public employee performance evaluation with regard to the position of city attorney. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address any of these items? Seeing that no one is here, do I hear a motion to close the...
Motion to adjourn the closed session.
Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Scott, seconded by Carla Perez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll now move into closed session.
... que hasta que hubiera un buen año, algo de ese yo, nunca vamos a saber si va a ser un bueno o malo año, necesitamos tratar. Y yo tenía algo de dinero ahorrado y con eso fue lo que empezamos. Decimos vamos a tratar, si se pierde, bueno, se perdió, pero vamos a tratar de hacer el negocio. Y de ese modo nos hicimos del negocio porque yo estaba insistiendo y todo esto porque tengo un hermano que es cuatro años mayor que yo y él ya tiene probablemente más de cuarenta años haciendo esto. Entonces, y luego otro hermano ya tenía como doce o quince años también trabajando con abejas. Luego seguimos nosotros y yo le insistí a él, vamos haciendo abejas y vamos comprando abejas y tratando, vamos a tratar. Y después de nosotros, hace como tres o cuatro años empezó otro hermano también con abejas. Desde que es, va yendo la familia.
La familia, sí, ¿verdad? ¿Y cómo pueden encontrarlos a ustedes, a las personas que estén interesadas en comprar, afuera de aquí de el mercado?
En Instagram. Estamos en Rancho Cucamonga, en Terravista. Ahí también vendemos y en las montañas, en Crestline, Twin Peaks, y Running Springs. Estamos en esas tres marquetas también.
Okay, ¿y qué es su Instagram?
Fabbies Bees.
Fabbies Bees. ¿Y tiene como un tipo de suscripción o diferentes descuentos para la gente que viene y compra más de un frasco de miel?
Sí. Cuando es más poquita el monto de la miel o la cantidad de miel es un poco más cara, pero conforme va creciendo, el volumen de miel es menos. Por ejemplo, una libra cuesta catorce dólares. Tres libras son treinta cuando deberían de ser cuarenta y dos dólares. Entonces, un galón trae doce libras y son nada más noventa y cinco dólares. Cuando doce libras deberían de ser como ciento sesenta o más, no estoy segura, pero es bastante caro por libra. Pero ya en un galón es mucho más barato ahora. Una cubeta trae cinco galones. Si fueran por galón serían casi los quinientos dólares, pero son solamente doscientos ochenta por una cubeta. Entonces, entre más volumen compren de miel es más barata.
Qué bueno. Pues muchas gracias por su tiempo. Aquí estuvimos con Fabbies Bees. And we will see you guys next week. Bye.
Bye.
Hey, everyone. July is Parks and Rec Month, and we're celebrating with something special for you to participate in. Check this out. Put in the mild and win prizes. Download the Challenge Runner app onto your phone. Signing up is free. Fill out the online registration form and enter the challenge code.
Throughout the month of July, make sure to get out and do some form of activity. It can be anything from taking a walk in the park, swimming in the pool, or biking through the city.
The winners of the Rialto Mova Palooza will win a prize to be announced on July 30th. Mova Palooza winners will also be automatically entered in our challenge card raffle to win SeaWorld tickets. You can follow us on our socials to stay in the loop about all of the exciting activities that we have this month. Happy Parks and Rec Month, Rialto.
The City of Rialto's upgraded permitting center is a seamless, user-friendly experience for permit applications, business license requests, and secure online payments. Designed for efficiency, transparency, and convenience, this platform is built to service residents, contractors, and city staff alike. Everything you need, all in one place. Check out this introduction video to the new online permit center coming June 2nd.
Welcome to Civic Access, the online customer access portal for the City of Rialto. This introduction will navigate you through the various online services and functions offered by the City of Rialto. As a guest visiting the site, you will be able to pay invoices, search for records, and view scheduled inspections. If you are a registered user, you will have access to see more information about your applications and records, and even apply for certain development applications. To log in, click Log In or Register in the top right corner of the page, or with the tile in the center of the screen. If you have not registered for Civic Access, please create an account prior to logging in. After successfully logging in, you will see additional tabs and functionality. The first tab is the homepage. This will bring you back to the main page again from wherever you are in the website. The next tab is the Apply tab. This is where you can apply for available online permit, plan, and business license applications. After clicking Apply, you will be automatically redirected to the city's decision engine, which is a guided application to help you find the correct permit, plan, or business license application to apply for. The next tab is the Dashboard. In the dashboard, you will be able to see the progress of your permit and plan applications that you submitted to the city. You will also be able to view all of your inspections and their associated statuses. Your dashboard will also show your open invoices. You can make payments by adding them to your cart and making a payment with a credit card. If you have business licenses with the city, they will be listed at the bottom of the dashboard screen. MyWork is another way to see all of your associated records in a list view. It is sectioned out into permits or plans, inspections, and invoices. If you applied for a permit or plan at City Hall, you should see the record in this screen. If you have difficulty finding a particular record, you are able to filter and sort your records. There is even an option to export your records into a Microsoft Excel file. Providing the correct email address and contact information on your application is essential to being able to see your records in the online portal. Please contact the city if you are not seeing your applications in the online portal. If you want to see scheduled inspections, click on the Today's Inspections tab. If you would like to see upcoming scheduled inspections or past scheduled inspections, simply change your desired date. The Search Records tab allows you to search and view information available for permit, plan, licenses, and inspections records. You can search with record numbers, keywords, or partial descriptions. Click on the record number to see more details of the record. If you cannot locate the record you are looking for, please contact the city. The last tab is the Help tab, which is where you most likely found this video. Along with this introduction video, there will be other instruction videos and help guides available to you. If you need additional assistance, please contact the city. Now that we have gone over all of the menu options, let's quickly go over the six tiles that you see on the homepage. These offer you another way to quickly navigate the most frequently visited menu areas of Civic Access. This has been your introduction to Civic Access, the one-stop shop for development and permit application needs. If you need any additional assistance or information with Civic Access, please contact the city. Thanks for watching.
Earth shakes, the ground moves, and things start to fall? You'll ask yourself, how prepared or unprepared are you? Have you removed objects from over the bed and over your head? Anchored your possessions securely to the wall. It won't be a pain, and you're not doing it in vain. Are your emergency kits packed? What about your family, your friends? Do they know what to do, how to get in touch, and where to meet? Do you know how to drop, cover, and hold on, covering your head and neck? What if you're outside? Or in a car? After the shaking stops, look around. Figure out what to do. Stay away from damaged areas. Turn on a radio. Reach out for help. And if you're trapped, do not move about. Stay calm. Only shout as a last resort. Once everything and everyone is safe, get prepared. An aftershock could be on its way. So before the earth shakes, the ground moves, and things start to fall, get prepared. Make a plan. Practice what you know, because an earthquake can happen anytime, anywhere. You never know.
Too hot outside? Need a place to cool down? Pay a visit to your local cooling center. The City of Rialto has three locations available for when temperatures reach 100 degrees Fahrenheit or heat advisories are in effect. The Grace Vargas Senior Center is located at 1411 South Riverside Avenue. Relax in a spacious lounge area with comfortable seating while staying out of the heat. The Rialto Branch Library is located at 251 West First Street. Pass the time reading a book or browsing through the internet while enjoying the library's air conditioning. Just a block over from the library, the Carl Johnson Center. Located at 214 North Palm Avenue provides you with the chance to stay cool but still active with its indoor basketball courts. Break the good kind of sweat here. For cooling center hours, check in with a location you plan to visit ahead of time. Stay cool during the heat waves, Rialto.
Hey, Rialto. July is National Parks and Recreation Month, and Rialto is celebrating by offering unique and free events Monday through Saturday all month long. This year's theme is Parks After Dark, to allow our community to join us at our programs during the hot summer. Our programming is dedicated to offering a variety of activities for all ages and abilities. Check out some of the awesome events we have planned.
Follow us on Instagram for our Fourth of July wristband giveaway on July 2nd.
Join us for our Fourth of July celebration at Jerry East Park from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. on Fourth of July.
Play tennis, pickleball, and basketball at Rialto City Park's upgraded ball courts in a special glow-in-the-dark sports event starting at 8:00 p.m. on July 14th.
Draw your heart out at the Sidewalk Chocovet at Ferguson Park from 7:30 to 9:30 p.m. on July 8th. We'll see you there.
Dance till you drop at our silent disco party at Joe Sampson Park from 8:00 to 9:30 p.m. on July 12th.
We're showing the karaoke sing-along version of The Little Mermaid at the Tom Sawyer Pool on July 15th at 8:00 p.m. Grab your swimsuit and get ready to play some mermaids.
Up here on land, they'd understand. They won't wreck me and their daughters. Bright young women, sick of swimming, ready to stand.
Enjoy some tunes at Rialto City Park courtesy of Smooth Groove Band on July 21st from 7:30 to 9:00 p.m.
Unleash your inner Picasso at our Doulas and Drinks event on July 26th at Chick-fil-A Rialto from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Paint on the canvas and win some giveaway prizes courtesy of Chick-fil-A.
This is just a preview of some of the events we're offering all July long. Make sure you stop by the Parks and Rec booth at each event to receive a stamp on your challenge card. Participate...
Participate in four or more events during the month, and your name will be entered in a raffle to win SeaWorld tickets. Winners will be announced on our Instagram and Facebook pages on July 30th.
And if you didn't memorize every single time and every single location for every single event we just went through, don't worry. We have a calendar at our Progress Magazine. You can follow us on our socials to stay in the loop about all of the exciting activities that we have this month. Happy Parks and Rec Month, Rialto. Hey, everyone, July is Parks and Rec Month, and we're celebrating with something special for you to participate in. Check this out.
Put in the miles and win prizes. Download the Challenge Runner app onto your phone. Signing up is free. Fill out the online registration form and enter the challenge code.
Throughout the month of July, make sure to get out and do some form of activity. It can be anything from taking a walk in the park, swimming in the pool, or biking through the city.
The winners of the Rialto Mova Palooza will win a prize to be announced on July 30th. Mova Palooza winners will also be automatically entered in our challenge card raffle to win SeaWorld tickets. You can follow us on our socials to stay in the loop about all of the exciting activities that we have this month. Happy Parks and Rec Month, Rialto.
The city of Rialto's Upgraded Permitting Center is a seamless, user-friendly experience for permit applications, business license requests, and secure online payments. Designed for efficiency, transparency, and convenience, this platform is built to service residents, contractors, and city staff alike. Everything you need, all in one place. Check out this introduction video to the new online permit center coming June 2nd.
Welcome to Civic Access, the online customer access portal for the city of Rialto. This introduction will navigate you through the various online services and functions offered by the city of Rialto. As a guest visiting the site, you will be able to pay invoices, search for records, and view scheduled inspections. If you are a registered user, you will have access to see more information about your applications and records and even apply for certain development applications. To log in, click Log In or Register in the top right corner of the page or with the tile in the center of the screen. If you have not registered for Civic Access, please create an account prior to logging in. After successfully logging in, you will see additional tabs and functionality. The first tab is the homepage. This will bring you back to the main page again from wherever you are in the website. The next tab is the Apply tab. This is where you can apply for available online permit, plan, and business license applications. After clicking Apply, you will be automatically redirected to the city's decision engine, which is a guided application to help you find the correct permit, plan, or business license application to apply for. The next tab is the Dashboard. In the Dashboard, you will be able to see the progress of your permit and plan applications that you submitted to the city. You will also be able to view all of your inspections and their associated statuses. Your dashboard will also show your open invoices. You can make payments by adding them to your cart and making a payment with a credit card. If you have business licenses with the city, they will be listed at the bottom of the dashboard screen. My work is another way to see all of your associated records in a list view. It is sectioned out into permits or plans, inspections, and invoices. If you applied for a permit or plan at City Hall, you should see the record in this screen. If you have difficulty finding a particular record, you are able to filter and sort your records. There is even an option to export your records into a Microsoft Excel file. Providing the correct email address and contact information on your application is essential to being able to see your records in the online portal. Please contact the city if you are not seeing your applications in the online portal. If you want to see scheduled inspections, click on the Today's Inspections tab. If you would like to see upcoming scheduled inspections or past scheduled inspections, simply change your desired date. The Search Records tab allows you to search and view information available for permit, plan, licenses, and inspections records. You can search with record numbers, keywords, or partial descriptions. Click on the record number to see more details of the record. If you cannot locate the record you are looking for, please contact the city. The last tab is the Help tab, which is where you most likely found this video. Along with this introduction video, there will be other instruction videos and help guides available to you. If you need additional assistance, please contact the city. Now that we have gone over all of the menu options, let's quickly go over the six tiles that you see on the homepage. These offer you another way to quickly navigate the most frequently visited menu areas of Civic Access. This has been your introduction to Civic Access, the one-stop shop for development and permit application needs. If you need any additional assistance or information with Civic Access, please contact the city. Thanks for watching. Too hot outside? Need a place to cool down? Pay a visit to your local cooling center. The city of Rialto has three locations available for when temperatures reach 100 degrees Fahrenheit, or heat advisories are in effect. The Grace Vargas Senior Center is located at 1411 South Riverside Avenue. Relax in a spacious lounge area with comfortable seating while staying out of the heat. The Rialto Branch Library is located at 251 West First Street. Pass the time reading a book or browsing through the internet while enjoying the library's air conditioning. Just a block over from the library, the Carl Johnson Center, located at 214 North Palm Avenue provides you with the chance to stay cool but still active with its indoor basketball courts. Break the good kind of sweat here. For cooling center hours, check in with a location you plan to visit ahead of time. Stay cool during the heatwaves, Rialto.
Hey, Rialto, July is National Parks and Recreation Month, and Rialto is celebrating by offering unique and free events Monday through Saturday, all month long. This year's theme is Parks After Dark, to allow our community to join us at our programs during the hot summer. Our programming is dedicated to offering a variety of activities for all ages and abilities. Check out some of the awesome events we have planned.
Follow us on Instagram for our Fourth of July wristband giveaway on July 2nd.
Join us for our Fourth of July celebration at Jerry East Park from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. on Fourth of July.
Play tennis, pickleball, and basketball at Rialto City Parks Upgrade the Ball Courts in a special glow-in-the-dark sports event starting at 8:00 p.m. on July 14th.
Draw your heart out at the Sidewalk Chocolate at Ferguson Park from 7:30 to 9:30 p.m. on July 8th. We'll see you there.
Dance till you drop at our Silent Disco Party at Joe Sampson Park from 8:00 to 9:30 p.m. on July 12th.
We're showing the karaoke sing-along version of The Little Mermaid at the Tom Sawyer Pool on July 15th at 8:00 p.m. Grab your swimsuit and get ready to play some mermaids. Up here on land, they'd understand. They won't remember their daughters. Bright young women, sick of swimming, ready to stand.
Enjoy some tunes at Rialto City Park courtesy of Smooth Groove Band on July 21st from 7:30 to 9:00 p.m.
Unleash your inner Picasso at our Doulas and Drinks event on July 26th at Chick-fil-A Rialto from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Paint on the canvas and win some giveaway prizes courtesy of Chick-fil-A.
This is just a preview of some of the events we're offering all July long. Make sure you stop by the Parks and Rec booth at each event to receive a stamp on your challenge card. Participate in four or more events during the month, and your name will be entered in a raffle to win SeaWorld tickets. Winners will be announced on our Instagram and Facebook pages on July 30th. And if you didn't memorize every single time and every single location for every single event we just went through, don't worry, we have a calendar at our Progress Magazine. You can follow us on our socials to stay in the loop about all of the exciting activities that we have this month. Happy Parks and Rec Month, Rialto.
Hi guys, welcome back to our show? What are we calling this? Vendor shout-outs, farmer's market? Whatever the case is, if you have any suggestions, leave a comment down below. But, we're here at the Rialto Certified Farmer's Market, and today, we will be talking to one of our vendors who is Happy Hog Farms. They have been here with us for a very long time at the farmer's market, so let's go check them out. Alright guys, we are here in front of Happy Hog Farms booth. Alright, let's get started. Are you ready? So, can you tell me a little bit about your business?
Uh, we're, we're local. We're in downtown Riverside, so we try to come out and try to support people for access to, like, fresh food, uh, organic. Uh, a lot of stuff that we sell right here is, is, we grow it, whether it's jerkines, avocado, lime. The juice machine, that's oranges from, from Riverside County. Everything is local.
Do you have any bestsellers or anything that customers love?
The guacamole, that's the best seller. My brother makes it, uh, but a little bit of tomato, a little bit of, uh, lime, and there's a lot of guacamole, there's a lot of chunks of avocado, so it's really, really good. That's our best seller, and the tamales. Everything is freshly made, and, uh, they're Mexican tamales. Because people ask, are they, what kind are they? Because some people use banana leaves, we use corn leaves. We have beef, pork, chicken, and cheese for the people that don't eat, uh, meat. And then, uh, we sell ceviche, fish, shrimp, vegan.
Alright, do you have any fun or interesting facts about the business?
Well, what people don't really know that, we're only allowed to use local. So when we, like, when we press the juice, we're only allowed what's in season. You know, so sometimes it's not as sweet as it was. Because once we run out of the navel, we'll start the Valencia, and it'll have to, like, it'll get sweeter as the weeks go by. So people don't know that, so they'll think, like, why aren't you just getting the, the sweetest that is, that's on right now? But, we don't get our stuff from, like, the markets or the commercial. It's all locally farmed.
Alright, well, thank you so much for joining us today. I appreciate it. Alright guys, well, that was Happy Hog Farms. We will see you guys next time. Bye!
Check one, two, three, four. Check one, two.
Cover and hold on. Visit ready.gov/earthquake and practice what to do to keep you and your family safe in the event of a real earthquake. And you'll be seen as a hero by your family and your loved ones.
When the earth shakes, the ground moves, and things start to fall, you'll ask yourself, how prepared or unprepared are you? Have you removed objects?
Hello, I'm Grace, and I am here at the Rialto Farmer's Market, um, second Wednesday of every month. And we are part of the Healthy Rialto Initiative, just trying to get, you know, recipes out to the people and show them what to do with the different ingredients from our farmers. Um, highlighting a different farmer every, every month. And yeah, we welcome you to join us at noon on the second Wednesday of every month. Come try out some recipes. Um, today, we made a pesto pasta salad. Uh, we used dandelion and alfalfa and pumpkin seeds. And we also made a licuado, a smoothie. And in this, we used napales and pineapple. And one of our vendors makes sea moss, so we added some sea moss to that. So yeah, don't miss out, we'll be out here. Come join us.
Have you heard about Senate Bill 1383? The California Senate passed a law to improve air quality and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. This new California law will require all residents to participate in the food waste recycling program. How does it work? Residential customers will begin placing their bagged food waste into their green barrel along with their green waste. Food waste collection is already part of your service. We just ask that it is sorted differently. What is food waste? Fruits, eggshells, bread, rinds, cooked meat and seafood, bones, vegetables, food-soiled paper, coffee grounds, and plate scrapings are all considered food waste. How will it work in your home? You will begin collecting food waste in its own plastic-lined container, separate from your other waste and recycling. We encourage you to use containers you may already have, such as coffee cans, small buckets, bins, or small waste baskets. We recommend a container with a lid to reduce odor. Place your container on your countertop, under your sink, or even in your freezer. Remember to bag all food waste, regardless of how you choose to collect it. We encourage you to reuse bags you may already have, such as bread bags or produce bags. Bags do not need to be compostable or biodegradable. Once full, please secure your plastic bag and place it in your green waste barrel. Please continue to use your green waste barrel as usual. Some items are not acceptable. This includes trash, metal, liquids, batteries, hazardous waste, electronic waste, animal waste, diapers, glass, and paint. Once collected, your food waste will be sorted and processed for composting at one of our material recovery facilities, where it will be turned into mulch, soil amendments, and landscaping material. Your efforts go a long way in closing the loop on sustainability and reducing waste in California. Thank you for doing your part.
Fighting news for Rialto residents. The city of Rialto has partnered with Rattle Tech to bring you the My Rialto app, available now on Android and iPhone. Need to report an issue like a pothole? Just tap Report Issue, choose Potholes, write a brief description, snap a photo, and the app will automatically fill in the location for you. Want to stay updated? Add your contact info or submit it anonymously. It's that easy. Paying city bills just got easier. The My Rialto app links you to all of the City of Rialto services, right at your fingertips. Looking for information on sandbags, park shelters, or community resources? The city info section has everything you need, all in one place. And check out our newest feature, QR code scanning. If you see a City of Rialto QR code on city property, like near our beautiful drought tolerant landscaping, just scan it with your camera or the app to learn more. Your city, your voice, your app. Download the My Rialto app today.
You know the Rialto City Clerk's Office provides passport services? Located at 290 West Rialto Avenue, walk-in service is available to the public, Monday through Thursday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. No appointment necessary. Applying for a new passport requires the following. It's important to note each applicant must be present. For children age 15 and under, this includes both parents. Fill out a DS11 form for each individual. Here's some important notes. You must use black ink and complete the designated boxes only. Note that DS11 forms are available upon request. You must fill out the parent information section, even if you are an adult applying for yourself. Do not use whiteout if you make a mistake. And do not sign the application until instructed to do so by the acceptance agent. Each applicant must have evidence of U.S. citizenship. Acceptable documents include: An original birth certificate or certificate of naturalization. This will be submitted with your application and mailed back to you at a later date. Proof of identity will also need to be established with a valid driver's license or identification card. Both parents will be required to show their IDs as a means of identification for their children. A recent passport photo will need to be submitted with the application. You can have your picture taken inside for a fee of $12. Two separate payments will need to be made when you submit your application. The first payment is the application fee, payable to the U.S. Department of State using check or money order only. The second payment is for the execution fee, made payable to the City of Rialto using check, money order, cash, or credit card. You can find current fees at rialtocca.gov by searching for Passport Services or scanning the QR code for a direct link to the page. If there are multiple applicants in the same family, you'll need to submit separate payments for each application. And that's it, you're ready to apply. If you are renewing your passport, keep in mind you can renew by mail, only if you can answer yes to these five requirements about your current passport. Number one, you have your passport in your possession to submit with a DS82 application. Remember, the City Clerk's Office can provide you with a form upon request. Number two, your passport is undamaged other than normal wear and tear. Number three, your passport was issued when you were age 16 or older. This means minor passports are not eligible. Number four, your passport has been valid for 10 years. And number five, your passport was issued in your current name, or you can document your name change. If you answered no to any statement, you must apply in person. If you have to apply in person, follow the steps to get a new passport. If you meet the five requirements, you can renew by mail with the submission of your current passport, DS82 form, a recent passport photo, and your payment. For further questions regarding passport services, contact the Rialto City Clerk's Office at or visit the office located at 290 West Rialto Avenue. Normal business hours are Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We are here to serve you.
Hey Rialto, my name is Maria from the City of Rialto's Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department, and I'm excited to share some awesome news with you. We're thrilled to announce the completion of the resurfacing project at Rialto City Parks, reinforcing our city council's commitment to maintaining high-quality public spaces that meet the needs of our families. As a family-first community, we believe that well-maintained, safe, and accessible parks foster a stronger sense of togetherness and community pride. So, what's new? First, check out these bold vibrant colors. Not only do they look amazing, but they're designed for better visibility and to bring energy and enthusiasm. These colors reflect our city's identity and our dedication to providing top-tier recreation amenities. Plus, we've introduced Rialto's first-ever pickleball courts. As part of the project, one of the tennis courts has been converted into four designated pickleball courts, giving our residents a fun new way to stay active. There's still more. We added our City of Rialto's Parks and Rec logo to the basketball courts and extended the fence between the pickleball and tennis courts to enhance the experience of our players. Interested in playing on the pickleball and tennis courts? Visit the Rialto Fitness and Aquatic Center for access. The basketball court is open for public use, so come in and shoot some hoops. We know that recreation plays a vital role in building a healthy and active community. That's why we continue to work towards keeping our parks, recreational facilities, and gathering places to a high standard that enhances the quality of life for our residents. This project was made possible by funding through department funds and the California Prop 68 Per Capital Grant Program. At the City of Rialto, we take pride in shaping a thriving and innovative recreational landscape, ensuring that our city keeps pace with growth while maintaining high standards our council desires and our residents deserve. We are committed to the future of Rialto, where families thrive, public spaces inspire, and recreation brings people together. We can't wait to see you at the courts.
What do you think about the new courts?
Awesome. Love the fiberglass backboard. And I was here the other day when they were painting it. So, yeah, I gotta come with my son and shoot some hoops.
It's impressive, you know, they did a great job with them.
And the colors, I love the colors.
They're so vibrant and welcoming. It's like you just wanna come and buy a new basketball. I love them.
Gets your attention right away. Um, and it's very nice to see that the city's actually doing something for, for the, for the park. It's a really nice upgrade.
I like how you can, you, you can raise a court, you can make it high, I mean lower and higher for the littler kids. I like everything about it. I like the environment, I like how it's gated up for the kids. I like it. Shout out to Rialto, y'all doing y'all big one.
I think about the courts, it's, it's fire and thank you for our community.
Nice.
I think about the court is that I love it so much. This is every hoop's dream and thank God for everything.
Nice. What do you think? You like them? Yeah, you, fire? Alright, you guys wanna shoot? Yeah, go, go, go.
I'm gonna shoot the half court.
19 emergency has hit working families hardest. That's why, all across the country, community action agencies are open and here to ensure the wellbeing of every American family. For over 50 years, we've been delivering hope and opportunity. Now more than ever, working families need life-changing services, solutions, and stability. Contact your local community action agency today.
Hey everyone, July is Parks and Rec Month and we're celebrating with something special for you to participate in. Check this out. Put in the mild and win prizes. Download the Challenge Runner app onto your phone. Signing up is free. Fill out the online registration form and enter the challenge code.
Throughout the month of July, make sure to get out and do some form of activity. It can be anything from taking a walk in the park, swimming in the pool, or biking through the city.
The winners of the Rialto Mova Palooza will win a prize to be announced on July 30th. Mova Palooza winners will also be automatically entered in our challenge card raffle to win Sea Rule tickets. You can follow us on our socials to stay in the loop about all of the exciting activities that we have this month. Happy Parks and Rec Month, Rialto.
The City of Rialto's upgraded permitting center is a seamless, user-friendly experience for permit applications, business license requests, and secure online payments. Designed for efficiency, transparency, and convenience, this platform is built to service residents, contractors, and city staff alike. Everything you need, all in one place. Check out this introduction video to the new online permit center coming June 2nd.
Welcome to Civic Access, the online customer access portal for the City of Rialto. This introduction will navigate you through the various online services and functions offered by the City of Rialto. As a guest visiting the site, you will be able to pay invoices, search for records, and view scheduled inspections. If you are a registered user, you will have access to see more information about your applications and records, and even apply for certain development applications. To log in, click Log In or Register in the top right corner of the page or with the tile in the center of the screen. If you have not registered for Civic Access, please create an account prior to logging in. After successfully logging in, you will see additional tabs and functionality. The first tab is the homepage. This will bring you back to the main page again from wherever you are in the website. The next tab is the Apply tab. This is where you can apply for available online permit, plan, and business license applications. After clicking Apply, you will be automatically redirected to the city's decision engine, which is a guided application to help you find the correct permit, plan, or business license application to apply for. The next tab is the Dashboard. In the Dashboard, you will be able to see the progress of your permit and plan applications that you submitted to the city. You will also be able to view all of your inspections and their associated statuses. Your dashboard will also show your open invoices. You can make payments by adding them to your cart and making a payment with a credit card. If you have business licenses with the city, they will be listed at the bottom of the dashboard screen. My work is another way to see all of your associated records in a list view. It is sectioned out into permits or plans, inspections, and invoices. If you applied for a permit or plan at City Hall, you should see the record in this screen. If you have difficulty finding a particular record, you are able to filter and sort your records. There is even an option to export your records into a Microsoft Excel file. Providing the correct email address and contact information on your application is essential to being able to see your records in the online portal. Please contact the city if you are not seeing your applications in the online portal. If you want to see scheduled inspections, click on the Today's Inspections tab. If you would like to see upcoming scheduled inspections or past scheduled inspections, simply change your desired date. The Search Records tab allows you to search and view information available for permit, plan, licenses, and inspections records. You can search with record numbers, keywords, or partial descriptions. Click on the record number to see more details of the record. If you cannot locate the record you are looking for, please contact the city. The last tab is the Help tab, which is where you most likely found this video. Along with this introduction video, there will be other instruction videos and help guides available to you. If you need additional assistance, please contact the city. Now that we have gone over all of the menu options, let's quickly go over the six tiles that you see on the homepage. These offer you another way to quickly navigate the most frequently visited menu areas of Civic Access. This has been your introduction to Civic Access, the one-stop shop for development and permit application needs. If you need any additional assistance or information with Civic Access, please contact the city. Thanks for watching. Thanks for watching.
Mayor Baca.
President.
Mayor Protem Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Carrasadas.
Present.
Councilmember Carlos Perez.
Present.
Councilmember Ever Montoya.
Present.
City Attorney Eric Vell.
Present.
City Manager Tanya Williams.
Present.
And also Mayor and Council, let the record reflect that the city treasurer would be absent for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Councilmember Edward Montoya Jr.
Everybody face the flag and hand over your hearts, please. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would remain standing, we'll have the invocation led by Pastor Harry Bratton from the Greater Faith Grace Bible Church.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you for this council meeting tonight. Thank you for each person here tonight who shares and partakes this meeting tonight. I pray that you would grant them wisdom, strategy, Father, to navigate through all the agenda items and make those tough decisions that they need to make at certain times. Thank you, Lord, for their being faithful to their being public servants. Thank you for the unity here in this meeting tonight. We pray, God, they always be mindful of doing the best for the community. Pray, God, they would always look for ways to improve, to make lives better and businesses better for the area and the community, Father. And I just pray, God, they would serve with diligence, honor, and character. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you'll be seated, at this time, we'll have the city attorney report on close session.
Thank you, Mayor. Your first item on close session was a conference with legal counsel with regard to one item of existing litigation. You gave direction to the city attorney's office on that item. There was no other reportable action. You then had a briefing on two matters of anticipated litigation, had briefings from counsel on both of those, no reportable action on those after that. You had a conference with your labor negotiator. We finished most of those issues. The remaining issues will come back at the next regular meeting. And your time expired before you got to the public employee performance evaluation, which will be held over until your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time, we'll move into presentations and proclamations. I will step up to the podium and present. Well, I guess I could do it from here. Well, I'll do it up there. On behalf of the city of Rialto, we'd like to present a certificate of recognition to a council member, Edward Montoya Jr., and it's for Life Saving Warrior of the Year Award for 2025, a veteran in the United States Army. Please come forward. On behalf of all of the city council members, signed by myself, the mayor, Mayor Protem, we have to correct this, Ed Scott, and council member Andy Cattacetis, council member Carla Perez, and then, of course, or Mayor Protem, I don't know if I mentioned your name earlier or not, Ed Scott.
You did.
And Andy, so, okay. On behalf of the city of Rialto, in recognition of your tireless effort and extraordinary contributions to the community, and of receiving the 2025 Life Saving Warrior of the Year Award, wow, that's quite an honor. We congratulate you and your accomplishments. On behalf of the city, we'd like to present you with this certificate. And then, we also have one from the supervisor. Is there a representative from Supervisor Joe Baca Jr.? If, Ed, can you bring that one up for me, please? Our Mayor Protem, Ed Scott, will assist me in making a presentation in behalf of the supervisor.
On behalf of County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr., 5th District Supervisor, certificate of recognition awarded to Councilmember Edward Montoya Jr., Life Saving Warrior of the Year Award presented by the San Bernardino County 5th District Supervisor. On behalf of the Vice Chair and Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. of the 5th District of the County of San Bernardino, it gives me great pleasure to join the city of Rialto and Working Dogs Warriors in recognizing you for your honorable service. Your remarkable dedication to serving our community plays an essential role in enriching the lives of many, and as your hard-working contributions are made, you're truly inspiring. We wish you continued success in your future endeavors. Congratulations, and it is signed by County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr.
Sir? Thank you both. Yeah.
Is that a relative of yours?
No, so this is a representative of Working Dogs for Warriors, Daisy Welsh.
Thank you, Daisy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I want to tell everybody who made this all possible, thank you. All of the organizations that were involved, Working Dogs for Warriors, various elected officials from numerous cities and county elected officials as well, thank you all. I do this for the community out of my heart. I don't get paid to do what I do. I do it because I care about my veterans and first responder community. And I just, I want to thank everybody who helps make it happen on a day-to-day basis. I can't do this without my team, and my team does it, again, for no money. We don't do this for the props. We don't do it to get high fives. We do it because we actually care about the people we serve, because we've been there in those low places as well. So, we like to give back, and we love to do what we do. So, thank you to everybody. Thank you, community. Thank you, council, and thank you, Daisy, and Working Dogs for Warriors.
Next, we have oral communications, but before we get into oral communications, I'd like to have the privilege of adjourning in memory of some friend of mine who passed away the Sunday before last. She was a resident of the city of Rialto for over 21 years. Her name is Bobby Joe Ayala. Her husband is Joe Ayala, a Rialto Unified School District former board member. Bobby passed away, and besides her husband, she had three children, Julie, Lisa, and Carla. And it happened to be that one of the individuals, that Lisa was married, one of his daughters is married to one of our firemen, a captain, Josh Gilliam. So, they're having the ceremonies and have had him a morning. Bobby was quite active in the city of Rialto. She was also very active with the church, as well as a Christian, with the church in Fontana. And then, she was active in becoming not only a minister, but helping many individuals. She touched the life of many individuals as a teacher. She taught for Riverside Unified School District. She also taught at Chaffee College, and was quite active in our community. She was a member of the Women's Club right here in the city of Rialto, participated in many of the activities. She participated in a lot of the fundraisers that were held by the Women's Club here in the city of Rialto. But Bobby did more than just being involved. She was a, they stated before, a mother, a grandmother, and a caring individual that cared about her family. Bobby and I, and her husband, took numerous trips together to a variety of different places. She happened to be in Washington, D.C. when I was a congressman at that time, and we awarded Arnold Palmer the Congressional Gold Medal. And Bobby was there, and she experienced for the very first time a trip in the tunnel. A lot of people don't know that there is a little train that you can take to the Capitol and go there, so Bobby had the experience of going there and being there. She loved to read an awful lot, but she also cared about this city because she had numerous events at her home for the firefighters, the Rialto firefighters. And I saw most of them because I attended a lot of those events that were held at the house in behalf of the firefighters and fundraisers that she had. She always participated. I know that she will be greatly missed and loved by many individuals in the community, and I know that personally, I had a relationship with her and her husband based on the numerous trips that we've taken together for a variety of different places, like my home state of New Mexico, where I was born. And then, of course, with her husband and I played a lot of golf, so the wives always went shopping when we were golfing, you know, at that point. But again, I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Bobby Joe Ayala. Thank you very much.
So, we have for oral communication to speak, we have Representative Jose from San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. He wants to come and introduce himself to us. Joe Valas Wettles.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Some of you already know me. My name is Jose Velazquez. I'm the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District Division One Director, which covers the city of Rialto. Just formally want to introduce myself to the council again, and just looking forward to work with each one of you in future projects that will bring sustainable, reliable water to the constituents of Rialto. So, just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other members?
I don't know if Erie A. Aldish, yes, he's here to speak. I don't know. What is that?
First of all, thank you guys for letting me speak. My name is Ariel Otero. I'm a member of the community. I actually grew up here, so key years of elementary school. So, Rialto holds a very special place in my heart. I came before you that I proposed a drafting and voting on local ordinance to formally designate Rialto as the sanctuary city. While Rialto is currently protected under California State 54, which restricts how local police and city employees interact with immigration authorities, I believe we could take a stronger stance. Currently, our departments are prohibited from using municipal funds and resources to help enforce federal immigration laws, except serious criminal circumstances, right? So, I propose that our city government take one step further by making our values clear and permanent through a local sanctuary ordinance. This action will build trust with our immigrant communities, prevent confusion, and send a powerful message of unity. Research has shown that sanctuary policies improve public safety, cities with such policies report lower crime rates, particularly in immigrant neighborhoods, as residents feel safer reporting crimes and accessing city services. By becoming the sanctuary city, Rialto can implement additional protections by prohibiting immigration agents from accessing local jails and city buildings, preventing any data sharing with immigration authorities, declining participation in immigration task force, and permanently barring any city staff from participating in immigration enforcement, regardless of potential state policy changes. This ordinance will reflect Rialto's core values of dignity, fairness, and inclusion by protecting families. by protecting families, supporting local workers, and defending basic human rights. I respectfully urge the council to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance and bring it to vote. Together, we can ensure a bright future for all Rialto residents. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for the concern with what's going on, not only in, in the city, surrounding cities in our area, and especially what has happened in LA, but at this time, what we can do then is ask our attorney to look at how and, and if we need to develop a, a plan in terms of how we deal with the immigration problem and how it affects all of us, because it's about democracy, it's about freedom, and it's about treatment of individuals' rights too as well. So hopefully, we can give a direction, and then the council then can decide what action they want to take, if any. Thank you. Any others?
No.
Hearing no other individuals from the public that would like to make oral comments, we'll move on to the consent item. Is there any item that any member wishes to pull from the consent item? And if not, then do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
Having a motion?
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Move, uh, move for approval by Carla Perez, council member, seconded by Andy Cottasetes. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, then we'll move on to the tab items. Move on to tab one.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The item before you requests council to conduct a public hearing for placing solid waste charges on the property tax roll and adopt two resolutions. One approving reduced waste collection rates for fiscal year 2526, and the other authorizing placement of these charges on the tax roll. Michael Hefman from Burt Tech will present you with the proposed rate information, and Amy Crowe will present the tax roll billing information.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council, city staff, and audience members here this evening. Michael Hefman with Burt Tech Waste Industries. I'm here this evening with my associate, Mr. Richard Nino, and today we'll be presenting on the proposed 2025 solid waste rate adjustment. Residential rate adjustment history is as follows. In June 27, 2023, the prior City Council conducted a Prop 218 hearing. At that hearing, the council adopted a resolution approving the municipal solid waste collection, recycling, organics, and disposal service rates for fiscal years 2324 through 2627. The proposed residential rate this evening includes one-half of the 2024 deferred residential rates. In 2024, there was no residential rate adjustment made. So, this evening's proposed rates, only one-half of that deferred residential rate is included. And each of the rates presented this evening are less than those approved during the 2023 Prop 218 hearing. Rate adjustment requirements include the following. Rate adjustments require City Council approval even when they're lowered. Services adjusted by the Consumer Price Index. The Consumer Price Index is the Riverside-San Bernardino, Ontario Index, which is 2.61% for this rate adjustment period. And disposal and processing components are as followed. The trash tip fee, there is no change per the City of Rialto's Waste Disposal Agreement with the county, and that remains at 4207 per ton. The organic processing fee is 9315 per ton, and the recyclables processing fee is 8340 per ton. Shown in the chart here are the most common residential rates throughout the community. The 60-gallon tax roll bill rate, proposed rate is 3587, which is less than the 2023 Prop 218 rate of 3831. The 40-gallon tax roll rate is proposed to be 3418, which is less than the 2023 Prop 218 rate of 3744. And the senior tax roll rate still includes a 15% discount for seniors under the 40-gallon service who are 62 years of age or older. And also point out that the 2025 proposed rates for residential services are all below the 2023 Prop 218 rates approved by the prior council. For the commercial and multifamily rates, the table shows the most common bins used in the commercial community. That is a three-yard trash bin, which includes recycling, serviced one time per week. The proposed rate is 25024, which is less than the 2023 Prop 218 rate of 26790. The 65-gallon food waste barrel is serviced one time a week. There's no change to that rate. The 4674, which is the current rate, is still less than the 2023 approved rate. And the multifamily three-yard bin, which includes bulky item collection service, has no change to the current rate, which is also less than the 2023 Prop 218 rate. The 2025 proposed rates for commercial and multifamily, all of the remaining rates that are within your packet and all the variable services are all less than the Prop 218 rates that were approved back in 2023. So, this evening's rate adjustment request is that the council adopt the municipal solid waste collection, recycling, organics, and disposal rates for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. And I would be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to turning it over to Ms. Amy for the tax roll billing resolution presentation.
This is a public hearing, so we'd ask for members, anyone else, before you turn it over, or do you want to have the public make comments?
Mayor, if we could, could we have the other staff presentation, then we'll have any public comments, and then we'll close.
Okay.
It's not part of one, the rest of this, I'll put up the same thing.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the council. This evening, I would request that the City Council conduct a public hearing to consider the placement of solid waste handling service charges on the property tax roll for residential customers. On July the 25th of 2017, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 7169, approving residential refuse collection service charges to be collected on the property tax roll. Prior to approving the placement of the service charges and fees on the tax roll, Health and Safety Code Section 5473 requires the City Council to conduct a public hearing. Notice of the public hearing was published in the San Bernardino Sun Newspaper on July 7, 2025, and July 14, 2025. The City prepared a written report, which contains a description of each parcel and fees and charges subject to tax roll billing. This report is on file with the City Clerk and included as attachment to Exhibit A to the proposed resolution authorizing the collection of the fees and charges on the tax rolls. At this time, I would request that the City Council conduct the public hearing to consider the placement of solid waste handling service charges on the property tax roll and adopt Resolution 8385, authorizing the placement of solid waste handling service charges and fees on the property tax roll. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
And Mayor, before you open the public hearing, I just want to point out that today, the county assessor requested we add some additional language. So, you have a modified resolution in your packet. It adds a Section 3 that states the Rialto City Council hereby certifies that the levy of the special taxes was authorized in accordance with the provision of Health and Safety Code Sections 5473.4 through 5473.11 inclusive, and directs the San Bernardino County Auditor Controller Tax Collector to place the charges on the 202526 tax roll. We apologize for the late substitution, but we only got the request from the county today to add that language. We're adding it in, in request of theirs. We don't think it is.
There's no objection. We'll add that language.
Thank you.
Seeing that there's no objection, we'll do so. Now, we'll open it up to any comments from the public. Are there any letters or?
No, I have no or comments.
Is there any member from the public which to address?
Motion to close public comments.
Motion's been made to close the public comments.
Second.
Motion's been made by Carla Perez, seconded by, which one of you?
Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, Ed Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions? Thank you. Motion carries. Do we need a vote on that?
No, no. Discussion amongst the council.
Are there any discussion amongst the council members in reference to this? Mayor Pro Tem, Ed Scott?
Could the Burt Tech folks come back up here? You made a statement that the city, a prior City Council authorized these rate increases through 218. I, I think that's a little bit misleading. All the council did was accept the results of 218. So, can you explain the 218 process to the community, to those in our community that don't understand the process, how it goes, what it entails, and what was the outcome of that? And I hope we know how many there were in opposition and how many there were in, well, it would be in opposition only, so.
Right. Thank you for that question, Mayor Pro Tem. The 218 process is mandated by the state, and it requires that when rates, essentially when rates are changing, notification to the public is required. And that requirement could be sent out to the public for no more than five years, so you can estimate rates over five-year periods, and those rates would be considered not to exceed rates. If there is any opposition that is presented to the city at the time or during the Prop 218, in order to put down the adjusted rate, 218 notification process, there needs to be more than 50% of property managed, parcel owners throughout the city. It would, would be required to turn down the 218 notice. And in 2023, I do not recall that that level was met.
Do you know what the percentage was in opposition, or was there any opposition?
I don't know specifically that number.
So, that I understand this more clearly, if there were persons that own properties in the City of Rialto and they objected to the rate structure that was proposed, they could have sent in a letter of opposition, correct?
Correct. Or could have appeared during the public hearing and spoken opposition.
And that threshold was not met, therefore, the rate structure was brought before the council and approved.
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. So, if, if people have opposition to utility rate increases, including trash, water, other things, then the way to oppose that is by writing a letter of opposition to the city?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? No, I'd just like to make a comment. In, in reference to the property tax roll, it really is, is it a, well, maybe I should just ask the question. Is it a savings to the individuals who sign up?
Yes, there is, there is a savings for the individuals who sign up under tax roll billing.
So, therefore, they would be saving by actually approving this and going forward because they would be put on the tax roll. And that's what we have in, in front of us in this document, because I noticed my address is on there. Is that correct?
I believe so, sir. Your address is on there, or your parcel at least.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem, Ed Scott, seconded by Andy Cottasetes. Any discussion, further discussion? Roll call. Roll call.
Who, who made the second?
Andy Cottasetes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrick Sells?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Mayor Baca?
Aye.
The maker of the motion, may I have you to read the resolutions for me, sir? Mayor Pro Tem, please. We are approving the two resolutions.
Go ahead.
Would you like for me to read them?
I have the numbers, but I don't have the actual resolutions. Do you need the numbers?
He can read the numbers in the resolution for me, please. Since this is going on the tax rolls, and I just want to make sure. Would it be okay if I read the resolutions?
Resolution number 8384, resolution number 8385, and additionally, the additional language as required by the county assessor's office.
Okay, that would be included in the resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
To put on the tax rolls. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. With that, then we'll move on to tab two.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the council. The item before you tonight is to request to conduct a public hearing and consider approval of substantial amendment seven to the fiscal year 2020 through 2021 annual action plan. Anna Lanue from AGI will go over the PowerPoint presentation, providing more detailed information for this tab item.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. This evening, we will be discussing, as part of the public hearing, the 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan substantial amendment number seven. This is specifically for the CDBGCV funds. Background on the CDBGCV funds. The City received $1,339,584 in supplemental community development block grant coronavirus funding, and the City allocated these funds, as noted on the table there. The Community Development Block Grant CARES Act program provides, provided grants to states, insular areas, and local governments to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the spread of COVID-19. Congress provided $5 billion in coronavirus aid relief and economic security, which is known as the CARES Act, for the CDBG program to states, metropolitan cities, urban counties, and insular areas to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. In June of 2020, the City initiated and implemented the CDBGCV program as referenced on the table provided. The funds were used for rental mortgage assistance, utility assistance, storefront small business assistance, PPE for seniors, workforce development, and COVID testing. These were the items and the amounts as programmed during that first presentation of the substantial Since then, there have been several significant amendments which were approved to address the needs of the community. And on May 9, 2023, the City Council approved substantial amendment number six, which appropriated the full amount, as noted below. The changes included a decrease in the rental mortgage utility assistance amount, a decrease of $100,000 for the storefront small business assistance program, a newly funded food insecurity program. There were no change to the PPE and hot meals for seniors, a decrease of the workforce development program, a newly funded SWAG program, and a newly funded warming center The amounts expended to date are listed here. The rental mortgage utility assistance program, $17,025 was repaid to HUD with a total available to reprogram of $26,497.29. That's what's left of the program. For the storefront small business program, 17 applications. For the storefront small business program, 17 applications were approved to date, 12 city-approved, and five, the consultant-approved. Council approved the updates to the guidance during the August 13 council meeting. In hopes of finalizing those applicants, the application was updated to allow the applicants to demonstrate losses for the entire pandemic period. The remaining balance is $106,000 of unspent CV funds for that program. The food insecurity program spent all of their programmed allocation. The PPE and hot meals for seniors program, there was no expenditures to date for that program. Therefore, the balance remains the same. The workforce development, the NCNW program, spent their allocation. The social work action group program, after review of the program's invoices, it was found that only $114,000 was valid expenses in compliance with the regulations. And the remaining funds were considered unsubstantiated and therefore available to be reprogrammed. And then, CB funds must be expended by February 2027. The amount that we're discussing at this moment is $440,447.40. Oh, I forgot to mention that the warming center also did not expend any funds for that program. Eligible uses. I'm sorry. Did I skip something? Ineligible uses. So funds, CB funds cannot be used for eligible, CDBG eligible activities and programs that do not prevent, prepare for, or respond to the coronavirus. It cannot be used for acquisition, construction, or reconstruction of buildings for the general conduct of government or political activities. It cannot be used for new housing construction. It cannot be used for local government maintenance and operating expenses or local government equipment purchases, nor for political or religious proselytizing, and it cannot be used for fundraising activities. Eligible uses. So here's a list of the eligible uses. You can utilize the funds for rehabilitation of public facility and park infrastructure to include broadband, which would be wiring fiber and optic cables to help access, to provide access for moderate-income areas, HVAC improvements to prevent COVID spread, plumbing upgrades to improve sanitation, the creation or improvement of outdoor spaces for social distancing, and touchless water fountains, automatic doors, all of which are intended to be to reduce or prepare for the spread of the pandemic. Outdoor recreational facilities, you can provide additional outdoor spaces for outdoor activities. You can purchase and install new gates or remove architectural barriers that restrict access for elderly and disabled so that they can have proper social distancing. They can be used for funding to additional public services that carry out activities that prepare, respond, or prevent COVID, such as homeless outreach, mental health services, and food banks. And the funds can also be used for the administration costs for CDBGCV. The CDBG ad hoc committee met on May 29 and reviewed various options for the use of the funds and proposed, they proposed to add an inclusive playground at the city of Rialto Park located at 130 East San Bernardino Avenue. Also note that this particular project, which was, funds were also allocated to this project from your CDBG annual action plan for fiscal year 25-26 at the June 24 city council meeting. The funds programmed at that time, $246,954. And then, the proposed is to allocate the remaining balance of your CV funds to the same program, allocating $440,447.40. The recommendation this evening, the staff recommends that the city council conduct the public hearing to solicit public comments from interested citizens. Number two, adopt a resolution adopting substantial amendment number seven to the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 annual action plan. Number three, authorize the city manager to, or they're designated to, submit the substantial amendment of annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Authorize the city manager or they're designated to take all actions necessary to implement the programs identified in the annual action plan and authorize the city manager or they're designated to make all conforming modifications and edits and to execute implementing documents required by HUD in a form approved by the city attorney. That concludes my presentation. I am available to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any letters that have come in from the public?
No.
None. Are there any members present that would like to address this? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made to close the public hearing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Edward Montoya. The motion was made by Carla Perez. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll move for discussion by members of the council. Are there any members of the council that wish to address this? Councilmember Ed Scott.
Yeah. You want to come back up? Under your list of ineligible uses, it says construction or reconstruction of buildings for general. I get that part. It said equipment purchases. Isn't the exclusive playground considered equipment?
It would be. Those are specific to the general conduct of business. So general conduct in, is determined, or the definition would be, for example, for the general administration of your city government services. But the playground would be serving the low, moderate-income households, which is an eligible activity.
Okay. And have we verified that this is an eligible item?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Other than that, I'd just like to state that by reallocating the funds and Carla Perez and I were members of the committee, and we felt that it was important for the city of Rialto to move in the right direction of having an all-inclusive playground for individuals with disability. We do not have such a park in the city of Rialto, and it would take us a lot closer in providing a service towards many individuals with disability that would be able to utilize our park. With that, do I hear a motion? So, motion's been made by Andy Cotticetus, seconded by Ed Scott.
Second.
By Mayor Protem.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Who's second?
I did.
Councilmember Carrasales.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Carla Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Mayor Baca.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tab three this evening is, will be presented by our utilities department, John Rossi. Our inter, utilities director will provide a brief summary and then turn over to Andrew Coleman with Veolia operator.
Thank you, honorable mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. John Rossi interim utilities director. And we're here tonight to do two elements for this tab. One, to conduct a public hearing regarding the city's 2025 Public Health Goals Report for the three years 2022, 2023, 2024. And then, secondly, to consider a receiving file action for the annual 2024 Water Consumer Confidence Report. And as the mayor, excuse me, the city manager mentioned, Andrew Coleman, our subject matter expert from RWS, Veolia is here to present both items and answer. We'll both endeavor to answer any questions you might have. So I believe we probably need to open the public hearing first as we start the presentation, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. My name's Andrew Coleman. I'm the field operations supervisor for Rialto Water Services operated by Veolia. I'm going to go over the slides and the presentation tonight. So this is the public health goals for 2025. It's going to be, or presentation for 2025. We're going to be reviewing over 2022, 2023, and 2024. Just to give, moving on to slide number two. Oh, wait a second. I get a control. Quick background. The Calderon Sheer Drinking Water Act of 1996 added new provisions to the California Health and Safety Code within mandate that a report be perceived, prepared every three years to provide water quality information to the public in addition for Consumer Confidence Report, CCR. This report has been prepared and to address the requirements set forth in section 116470 of the California Health and Safety Code. It is based on the water quality analysis during the years of 2022, 2023, 2024. The law requires that a public hearing be held for a purpose of accepting and responding to public comments for this report. What are the, what are public health goals? Public health goals, or PHG, is the safe level of constituents' concentrations which pose no significant health risks to consumed for a lifetime. The process of establishing a public health goal is a risk assessment based on strictly on human health considerations. Public health goals are recommended targets and are not required to be met by any public water system. PHGs are developed by the California Environmental Protection Office of Environmental Health and Hazards Assessment. As we go into public health goals, we have to understand what is a public health goal? What does it mean? What are some of these stuff? And one thing you have to look and understand, what is a maximum contamination level? Or what is considered an MCL? Upon establishment of a public health goal, the California State Water Resources Control or Division of Drinking Water Environmental Management determines a maximum contamination level in the drinking water. The MCL is the highest level of concentrations that is allowed in drinking water for that, for a constituent. Tonight, these are the public health goals that we will be covering. The report detected three constituents above the public health goal guidelines for 2022, 2023, and 2024. We are going to be covering, going over arsenic, hexavalent chromium, and this is a very long one. We're just going to call it dioxin TCDD. Brief overview over arsenic and what is considered the public health goal and what is considered the maximum contamination level. The public health goal is 0.0PPB. To give a understanding, what is PPB? Not everybody deals with this. PPB is, to put in general understandings, is one second in nearly 32 years. The MCL for arsenic is 10PPB. Therefore, safe levels of arsenic in the drinking water is in, is any level under 10PPB. Arsenic is found in one of our wells. That is City Well 2, is a natural occurring substance. And the water is blended with multiple sources within our system. Here is a data graph showing a 10-year span of our arsenic samples. Over that, if you can take a look from what is from our samples from quarter two, 2023 till present, all samples have normalized and are at a normal level that has been with this well since it's been around. Here is two new constituents or contaminants. These two contaminants, we have sampled four in the past, but due to the Department of Public Health and the Department of Drinking Water, every so many years, they adjust what is considered public health goals and levels for detection. So these are two new ones, not new ones, two contamin, or two constituents that they decided to look into and adjust the actual detection level and the MCL. And they can do that due to technology that actually detects lower limits. So we're going to be going over the results from 2023, 2024 for hexavalent chromium and trichloral dibenzene P-dioxin TCDD. Hexavalent is a natural occurring substance. It's in our aquifer. The public health goal for hexavalent chromium is 0.002PPB. To put that in understanding, that is one second in 32 years, to put in layman's terms. The maximum contamination level for hexavalent is 10PPB. Therefore, safe levels of hexavalent chromium in the drinking water is in, is any level under 10PPB. Here is a quick graph of our, of our samples and when they were pulled and what the actual levels were per the samples taken in 2024, October 2024. Move on to trichloral dibenzene P-dioxin TCDD. This is a color solid. It is, it is occurring in the aquifer. Due to these processes, is found in soil, sediments, and sand, and sandy groundwater. The public health goal, this one's even, this one's a little more distant. This is the public health goal, this is in pictograms per liter. This is in, in basically quadrillions of a liter. To put what is a quadrillionth of a liter is one minute and 2 billion years. The public health goal for this one is 0.05 pictograms per liter. If you put that into other numbers, it's actually 15 zeros after the point, when it gets into other levels, if you want to think about it in parts per billion. The maximum contamination level for pictograms per liter is 30 pictograms per liter. Therefore, safe levels of dioxin TCDD in the drinking water is any level under 30 pictograms per liter. Here is the results from our sampling event back in 2023. Also, we are putting this as, if there's any questions or any comments or concerns, myself and John Rossi are here to answer them for the public health goals. And any questions on the Consumer Confidence Report for 2024?
At this time, it's a public hearing. Are there any letters from any individuals that wanted to address this subject matter?
No.
Hearing none, then it's open to the public. Are there any members present that would like to address this? Hearing none, do I hear a motion from the council to?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion's been made by Carla Perez to close the public hearing, seconded by Edward Montoya. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll have discussion amongst the members. Are there any members that would like to address this subject matter? Councilmember Mayor Protem. Ed Scott.
I didn't see any results for PFOS on here. Do we, are we testing for PFOS?
We do test, but it's not part of the state-required report.
So do we not disclose PFOS testing to the residents of the community?
It's not.
Good evening, Mayor Protem. Yes, we do do PFOS sampling. It is in our CC, it should be in our CCR. We only have two wells that we do PFOS sampling on.
And what are those wells, do you know?
The one of the wells is not active. It is Rialto Well 5. And then another one is Chino Well 2, that is non-detect.
And why only those two wells?
These, so for PFOS sampling, during some of the sampling events, what they call the UCMRs, there's a whole level of sampling that they do. That is UCMR 1, UCMR 2, UCMR 3 and 4. So during the UCMR 3, all, all sources inside of the city of Rialto were actually sampled for PFOS. The only one that came up was Rialto Well 5. That was inactive, never ran into the system. The state of California put together a list and actually put together a whole sampling plan for all wells and water agencies within the state of California of wells of interest or anything. It's actually stated on the DDW website. And for the wells inside the city of Rialto, they chose Rialto Well 5. That actually had a detection. That well is off.
Do you know if well, has well 6 ever had any indication of PFOS?
Rialto Well 6 is operated by West Valley Water District, and it is leased out to them for their fluid bed reactor system.
Do you know what their results are, or do they have any?
I can't speak to that, sir.
Okay.
You don't test it.
We don't test it. That is West Valley Water.
Does West Valley? Does West Valley test it?
West Valley would have the.
Could we request from West Valley?
Sir.
All PFOS testing?
Sir.
Results?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions by members?
No.
Hearing none.
Motion to approve the report and receiving file.
Motion's been made by Carla Perez to approve the report as filed.
Second.
Seconded by Andy Cottasetes. All those, any, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you.
And Mayor, and just to clarify, the second report, which is in your packet, is a receive and file action. This is the annual qual, water quality report for 2024. It's already been made available to the public, but we want to make sure, we bring this to you each year, so it's there and you're aware of it. So we'd appreciate a receiving file on that too, if you're so inclined.
Tap 4?
It's part of tab 3. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Tap 4?
Thank you. And so I'm here on the second item to conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding placement of delinquent sewer service charges on the county property tax roll for the upcoming fiscal year. City of Rialto, through the Rialto Utility Authority, provides sewer services to property throughout the city and portions of Bloomington. For most accounts, of course, water and sewer bills, services are billed together, allowing for effective enforcement for non-payment. However, in cases where water service is provided by outside agencies such as West Valley Water District, our Fontana Water Company, the city has limited enforcement options for unpaid sewer bills. To address this challenge, the city amended its municipal code in 20, excuse me, 2007 to allow the placement of delinquent sewer charges on the San Bernardino County tax roll. This method, which mirrors the process used, you took action on earlier in this meeting for solid waste fee recovery, provides a fair and consistent tool for collecting past due balances for sewer-only accounts. In accordance with the required process, staff compiled and verified a list of 1,429 properties with unpaid sewer charges, which are listed in your packet. All impacted property owners were sent notification letters informing them of their delinquency and providing a final opportunity to make payment. The deadline for bringing any accounts current and therefore be removed from the list was June 24th. We did not receive any payments. And again, the, the sum of these charges is $1,189,175. So we would recommend that you consider opening a public hearing to take any comments on this action.
Thank you. Are there any letters from any member of the public that wanted to address this?
No.
Hearing none. Okay. Are there any members in the public that would like to address this?
Move to close the public hearing?
Motion's been made by Mayor Protem to close the public section, seconded by Edward Montoya. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. Now we'll have it open for discussion from members of the council. Mayor Protem Ed Scott?
Move approval of Resolution 8387 and RUA Resolution 08-43.
Motion's been made, seconded, motion's been made by Mayor Protem Ed Scott, seconded by Andy Cottasetes. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to tap 5. Thank you very much, John.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council. The item before you requests the introduction of ordinance number 1701, which adds important exceptions to the city's existing street cut moratorium. In 2017, City Council adopted our current moratorium to protect newly paved streets from untimely failures. This ordinance has been effective, but areas where reasonable exceptions would benefit Rialto residents without compromising the city's infrastructure goals have been identified. For instance, if a resident wants to emit their septic tank and tie into the city sewer system, our current ordinance prevents the resident from doing so for up to five years after a street was paved. So this ordinance that is proposed will allow for single-family homeowners to be exempt from the moratorium time windows for septic-to-sewer conversions, replacement or repair of existing water or sewer service laterals, and utility repairs resulting from homeowner improvements or emergency repairs. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any members, or do I hear any?
I just have a question.
Question by Mayor Protem Ed Scott?
I just want to make sure that when these cuts are made, that we have something in place to make sure that the repave or patch of these trenches and cuts is done in an appropriate way that preserves the integrity of that asphalt.
Yes, we do. They still have to meet city standards and will be inspected by a city inspector.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Edward Montoya?
Oh, no, sir, my sorry.
Okay, do I? Move approval.
Motion's been made by Mayor Protem Ed Scott.
Second.
Seconded by Carla Perez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Move on to tap 6.
Mayor, I need to read the ordinance into the record.
Ed?
Mayor, I'll read it.
I can read it for you. It's an ordinance of the city of Rialto, of the city council of the city of Rialto, California, amending Section 11.04.145 moratorium on trench cuts and newly paved streets of Chapter 11.04, improvements of Title 11 Streets and Sidewalks of the Rialto Municipal Code to add exceptions to the street cut moratorium by title only and waive further reading and provide any other direction as determined. And it is ordinance 1701.
Mayor Protem Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrie Sellers?
Aye.
Mayor Baca?
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move on to tab 6.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of the council. Tab 6 is requesting council's consideration for adoption of Resolution 8388. This is accepting the grant funding from SBCTA in the amount of $976,750 for the smart corridor Riverside Avenue project and to authorize the city manager or their designee to execute all related documents. So in January, SBCTA released a request for proposals to develop smart arterial corridors throughout the valley. In March, the city council authorized staff to apply in response to this request, and in June, SBCTA approved funding for this project. The project will upgrade traffic signal technology. The upgrades will replace aging traffic controllers with intelligent transportation systems technology. This includes AI-enabled video analytics, advanced communications, and remote monitoring capabilities. This will enable real-time traffic management, automated data collection, and dynamic signal timing adjustments. This is all aimed to improve traffic flow and reduce congestion. The total project cost is 1.2 million. The grant covers 976,000, and the city is providing a local match of 225,000 from Mesher I funds. Staff recommends approval of both actions, accepting the grant funding, and authorizing execution of all related documents. This concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from members of the council?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor Protem Ed Scott?
Ms. Carona, and I do like that name.
Thank you.
Question, what section of Riverside Avenue does this include?
So this is from Valley to Merrill Avenue, Valley Boulevard to Merrill Avenue.
To Merrill. So it does not include the overpass over the 10 freeway?
That is correct.
Unfortunately.
Correct.
So will there be a way to get Caltrans to help sync with us?
I'll let our assistant city manager address that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, we are going to try. However, I kind of have a feeling Caltrans will say no, because they do have plans to upgrade those signals in 2028, I believe is the, is the timeframe. So with smart controllers as well. So if we can get them to expedite their project and coincide with ours, we'll, we'll give it a shot.
Okay, that, that would certainly be nice. So maybe traffic could go a little smoother from Merrill all the way down, so.
Absolutely.
If nobody else has questions, I'll move approval.
Okay. Motion's been made to approve by Mayor Protem Ed Scott, seconded by Andy Cottasetes. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. We'll move on to tap 7.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to present for the council's consideration a professional services agreement for independent audit services with the PUN group. This agreement would include an initial term of three years for the PSA in the amount of $269,854 with two optional one-year extensions. So each year, the city requires an independent audit of its financial records and a contracted firm to provide that opinion on the reporting, reporting of the financial condition of the city and all its related funds. For the last three years, the city has used the services of Lance, Saul, and Lungard, or LSL, to perform the annual audit for financial statements for fiscal years 2021, 22, 22, 23, and most recently, 23 and 24. The contract with LSL has expired, and the city does not intend to exercise the option for an extension, which is in line with GFOA best practices. Staff initiated requests for proposals back in April to select an auditing firm and commence with the fiscal year 2024, 25, which just ended June 30, for the annual audit, as our year-end process is already underway. Per the GFOA or Government Finance Officers Association, it's a best practice for a local government to replace its audit firm at the end of the contracted period, for, for a period not to exceed five years, which contributes to auditor independence, promoting transparency in financial reporting. Two firms responded.
Motion's been made by Andy Cottasetes, seconded by Mayor Protem. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the report by members of the council. I'll start with myself. I'll be very short. I attended the 4th of July fireworks event. It was excellent and well-attended by a very, a variety of different people from the city and throughout the city and outside the city that attended the event. Well-done, well-executed, and I think everybody enjoyed the 4th of July. And that concludes my report. Next, I'll call on councilmember Mayor Protem Ed Scott. No reports this evening. Thank you. I'll call on.
No report.
Andy Cottasetes, no report. On Carla Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. No reports. I just want to take a moment to wish my middle child, Mariah, a happy 21st birthday today.
You're 21?
Yes, so we'll be celebrating shortly.
Oh, wow.
Happy birthday. Edward Montoya?
I've been attending Parks and Recs, fun evenings, and I've been having a really good time. I just want to let everybody know that they're having events in the evenings, and it's been a really great time, the little blacklight chalk event and.
You've been doing sidewalk chalk?
I, I did some sidewalk chalk. But yeah, it's been a really great time. But I also want to remind everyone that National Night Out is coming up, August 5th. So I hope to see you all there. Come on out and, and check out our brisket competition. And, and I'll be the one representing the city council, so, you know, I, I hope.
Just don't let us down.
I hope, I hope PD and Fire are bringing their barbecue skills, because I'll have the mayor at my house taking shifts, and I'll have the other council members at my house taking shifts. They better be. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to our city clerk.
You have it?
No report.
Thank you. All right, next, I'll move on to our city manager, Tanya Williams?
No report this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll call on our city attorney, Eric Vale.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, there was a recent case that came out, decided by the California Supreme Court called Brown versus City of Inglewood. And in that, the California Supreme Court determined that elected officials were not entitled to whistleblower, whistleblower status or whistleblower protections under state law, because they do not fall under the definition of employees in the Labor Code. So just word to the wise.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on our police chief, Mark Kling.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. I just want to make a couple of comments. It's so nice to see Chief Jensen here. And I know that former Chief Park is up in Washington, probably watching tonight, wishing he was still here. Oh, well. Actually, I am going to have Gabe put something up on the screen for us, and I would just need about three minutes. I know you want to hurry up and get out of here, but I just want to kind of share with you some of the things that are happening across the street that I think you'll find interesting. And I also, while he's loading this, I want to make sure that I at least express my sincere appreciation for my assistant, Jeanette Lopez, for putting this together. And it'll just give you an update to what the department is now looking like, that you've all approved and support. So, Gabe, if you can load that for me, I appreciate it. So Gabe, if you can load that for me, I appreciate it. So once again, council, just to let you know, we appreciate your support, you know, professional building for a professional police department for this community. Thank you so much.
I just have a comment. I've noticed that a lot of people have been inquiring about the police department and the new police station that we have, and then with the new crime lab that we have. Has there been an interest of many other individuals that would like to become police officers in our City of Rialto because we've upgraded it?
That's a, the short answer is, we're in a really good spot right now. And again, it goes back to council support for increasing our numbers. That building has attracted a large amount of interest in our police department. And you know, we're in one of the few agencies, you keep adding positions for us, but our vacancy ratios are actually above most departments around us. And it's helped us recruit.
Right.
And it's also going to help us retain.
Yeah. Because some people have approached me in reference to be wanting to work for our police department here because of what we're doing with all of the members here in the council and the action that we've all taken. So it's a positive thing. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, council, thank you so much.
Next, we have our acting fire chief, Jensen.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council. First, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to sit in this position in an interim role. It's a pretty exciting time for the organization, and I appreciate you trusting me with this important and vital position. So thank you on that.
Chief, you're only following parks?
I'm sorry?
You're only following parks. That's it.
We had a couple of promotions in the last week. Engineer Justin Velose to fire captain, and engineer Chad Boatman to fire captain. And we have three new firefighter paramedics, Roland Blackiston, Sergio Hernandez, and Javier Bernal. So they're on board and working through their promotional processes. And the last thing I just wanted to mention, that on Saturday, we partnered with our Rialto Parks and Recreation Department for this year's Drowning Prevention and Safety Day. And students were taught live water rescue demonstrations, real-time emergency response, so they got to see the crews in action for when somebody's removed from the water, what actually happens after that. And we provided some critical water safety practices. The students were also taught hands-only CPR and both kids and adult life-saving skills. So we partnered with Park and Rec. It was a great event, and I appreciate the support back and forth between our departments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to call on our assistant city manager and director of maintenance and facilities, Tim Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. No reports this evening.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call on Christina Taylor, interim director of communications, community development, should I say?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Cynthia Alvarado Crawford, a director of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and members of the council. Here's what's going on in Rialto. On Thursday, July 24th, at the Grace Vargas Senior Center, we will have our senior bucks auction day. It'll be from 2:00 to 3:00 PM in the Berglin Room. We have several really nice items to auction off for our seniors. They do get really excited about this, so if you want to see a live auction in action, please stop by. Movies in the Park, this will be our last showing, which will be this Friday, July 25th, at Joe Sampson. Fun starts at 6:00. We'll be showing Despicable Me 4. Rialto Panthers versus Public Safety will be, the games will be on Monday, July 28th, at Ferguson Park. Games will start about 5:00 PM. In-the-lab basketball training classes will run from July 28th through August 27th. Classes will be held at the Carl Johnson Center. Parks and Rec Month Challenge Card Raffle will be happening Wednesday, July 30th. We will be raffling off some SeaWorld tickets that were donated by 104.7. Rialto Community Players are showing the Hunchback of Notre Dame now through August 2nd at the Sandra Courtney Playhouse. Tiny Tots August Session starts on August 4th at Hugh Banks Elementary from 9:00 to 12:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. National Night Out will be Tuesday, August 5th, at Rialto City Park from 5:00 to 8:30 PM. Battle of the Badges Brisket Cookoff will be between city council, fire, and the police department. It'll be $5 to vote, and the proceeds go to MAD. Session Five Swim Lessons, registration will be Saturday, August 2nd, and the lessons will start that Monday on August 4th at the Tom Sawyer Pool. Sunset Market, Vendor Market will be happening at Rialto City Park on Saturday, August 9th, from 5:00 to 10:00 PM. And then for our residents, just so that they know, compost and mulch is available for pickup at Rialto City Yards seven days a week during daylight hours. And then youth basketball registration will be happening at Carl Johnson Center. Our assessments will start on August 11th, and the makeup day will be August 16th. And again, if there's no assessment, there's no registration.
Thank you very much. I also like to just mention that we had Concert in the Park on Thursday, I believe, right?
It was yesterday.
Yesterday. Okay. Monday, yeah. So that's a good thing that we have in the area. And I think that we should probably do a lot more advertisement and letting the public know that we are having, we don't have an amphitheater, but we do have concerts in the park. So any activities that we do have in the future that we should do, a little bit more publicity and letting them know. I know that we have social media that's out there, and I know that people can go on the, our newsletter that's put out, or our magazine, and look at the events that are going on. But for such events like that, I think they're good, that some of the members here probably, if they had known that this was going on, they may have attended to as well. So again, I just wanted to mention that, and thank you very much for having Concert in the Park at Rialto City Park. With that, then, I'd like to move on to our finance director, Scott Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. No update.
Thank you. Shaima, director of human services.
I have no update. Thank you.
John Rossi, director of utilities.
I just want to say thank you tomorrow is my last day, but I thought it would be three months, a couple days a week, turning into nine, or like three days a week. But it's really been a pleasure, and I make a little difference. Very important part of the city utility, and I just?
Not online, sorry. Anyway, I appreciate the time, and I wish you all the very best. I appreciate city manager. She's been very helpful, and it's a very interesting set of challenges the utility has, very important part of the city, and I wish you all the very best going forward. I've enjoyed it. Thank you.
Well, we went in behalf of the City of Rialto. We'd like to thank you for the time that you have spent out here and directing us, and I think it's been very positive, John, and we wish you the very best in your retirement or your future endeavors in whatever you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John, for all your help.
I appreciate it.
With that, that concludes the reports. At this time, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Carla Perez to adjourn. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Edward Montoya, councilmember. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Council's adjourned.